The meeting will come to order. Welcome to this Monday, March 17, 2014, Meeting of Mercer Island City Council. Alec, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Debbie Britton.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Braun.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sello.
Here.
Councilmember Thomason.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grous.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you. First item of business is appearances. I'm guessing we don't have anyone who'd like to speak? It is rare. All right, we'll move to minutes. We have one set of minutes. Study session and regular meeting minutes of March 3, 2014. So, motion?
I agree. Are we in the minutes of March 3, 2014?
Second. Any alterations, problems? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Motion carries. Move to consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, and Agenda Bill 4935, a resolution sponsoring Norcom's request to join the Association of Washington City's Employees Benefit Trust. So, a motion.
And we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the second set of APs and also the Resolution, Norcom, Resolution 4935.
Okay, so we'll just have payroll and the first set of payables remaining. Anyone else?
If you could just pull all the payables off, because I can't split the motions on that.
Okay, that's up. We're down to just payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. All right, move to payables. Mr. Suro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions on Set 2, page 12. PDF 29 for those following on digits. So, I have a question, Chief, that's kind of in your wheelhouse, on the 53K DVR replacement system. I'm assuming that's for a new -- we've got new cars?
Yes, some new video system in them.
And that's for all three cars or?
All five cars. Actually, six. It's seven. We have one in the PSO vehicle.
So, you replace those all at once?
Yes. Yeah, the old system.
It's not a function of a new platform?
Correct. It was a function of, the old system was out of date, they weren't making parts for anymore, and I believe they were getting on eBay some of the parts. Yeah, the company that made this system went out of business. So, we had come to the council last budget process and asked for authorization to buy a new system, and that's what this is.
Okay. Because I remember that exact reason.
Yeah.
The eBay thing.
Yes.
That was way back then.
That's way back then.
Okay. And the DVR, that is where, it's the in-camera, the windshield camera?
Yeah, it's the in-car camera system.
Okay, and will there be higher maintenance capability on that? They'll not fail or? I'll get you offline on that.
All right.
Okay, the, excuse me, the reason I ask that, Debbie Mayor, I think we had an issue with that a while back at a critical time. So, Set 2, page 12, same, the EV station, thanks, Chief. Mr. City Mayor, this might be in your area. The 6.7K, and I noticed on our weekly that we're charging 50 cents an hour. Obviously, we're not recouping the installation charge if we're doing that. Is that right?
You're correct about that. Right now, that rate is set to recoup our operational costs. We base that rate looking around at what other cities and institutions with these chargers are currently charging. So, that's going to be the charge we start out with, and we're going to look at over time how we might adjust that. But right now, you're correct about the capital.
Why wouldn't you say we want it paid off in five years or so with some gross assumptions and, you know, $2 an hour, whatever it might be? Well, isn't it something, we're using public money, we're giving away public money for this service. The installation would be part of that gift. Otherwise, it's a gift, that installation.
I don't believe it's a gift just as the original installation itself, under the federal grant, which required free charging was not a gift. And I think part of the reason that we're placing, at least at this point, the fee where we are is, like I said, one, what the market is doing, and then, two, you know, these chargers were installed to try and encourage public movement towards electrical vehicles across the region. And so, at least from our view, setting the rate that's comparable to what others are setting is the right step.
Now, when you say the market, is that cities, public, or is it?
Cities, hospitals, other entities like, you know, other large organizations who are primarily the ones that have these charging stations right now.
Okay. If you'll do me the favor, just looking to see that we're not gifting the installation, if that's not too much trouble.
Second.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Without that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Payables 22714 and 3614.
Second. Okay. And just because you've opened them up, and Chip, feel free to beg off on this if you don't have an answer, but I'm on Set 1, page 9. Third item from the bottom, $47,000 to King County Finance for 2013 voter registration costs. I was just curious, what, why are we paying the county voter registration costs? I'll let Alec answer that, since she pays the bill each year.
I personally don't pay that bill.
Although, if you chose to, we'd be fine with that.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure that I would.
Voters would be very happy with that.
Would that be me doing my civic duty?
Yes.
I actually had a records request about this today, so I just want to open up the file. King County bills us each year for these costs, and each, according to RCW 29A 08150, each city and town has apportioned its share of voter registration expense based on its registered active and inactive voter population. King County is required to absorb its proportionate share for unincorporated areas. So, it says, "Whereas election costs are transferred from the jurisdiction's property tax accounts to the county, voter registration costs must be invoiced to each jurisdiction." So, we have, according to King County, 17,537 voters, and we, our portion for each one of those is $2.56. Every year, we pay that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's nothing else, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Motion carries. That takes care of payables. We'll move to Agenda Bill 4935, Resolution sponsoring Norcom's request to join the Association of Washington City's Employee Benefit Trust. Mike, you took it off, you get to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, just a couple of general, actually, I think one general question and then a statement. So, are they part of, this is, okay, this is not a lobbying arm, if you will, of AWC. This is just to go into the insurance, as it says. Is that what I'm reading here? And so, it's in making the pool larger?
Exactly.
In that perspective?
Correct.
Okay. I probably didn't need to pull this, I apologize to the councils.
If you hadn't, I think Thompson would have, so we'll turn to him.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, the reason, the one change I would suggest that we make is simply to add a fifth whereas, simply to make it clear, it's in our summary, but I just wanted to make it clear in the resolution that by sponsoring Norcom, that this does not result in any cost or additional liability to Mercer Island. So, you know, my proposal is to simply add a fifth whereas, that whereas the city of Mercer Island has expressed a willingness to sponsor Norcom's request to participate in the AWC Employee Benefit Trust benefit programs, and has been advised that such sponsorship will not result in any additional obligation or liability to the city of Mercer Island.
Second. And I guess we, great, we have to go back to, yeah, we have to go back to, and Mike, I should have let you make your motion, so my apologies for that. So, okay, how do we, can we?
Original motion with that, with that?
Addition. Well, I would move that we amend Resolution, just 1481, by adding this additional whereas.
Just move the resolution as.
As amended.
All right, I'll move the resolution with this amendment.
That was her second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
You're going to have to read it slowly.
I got it.
She's got it already.
Okay, any discussion of the motion, which includes the fifth whereas?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Motion carries. We'll move to regular business. Agenda Bill 4933, Police Hire Ahead Position. Chief Holmes.
All right. Well, good evening, for the record, Chief Holmes. Your police chief. And I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but what I thought I would do is I would simply highlight, I spent a few minutes highlighting what you have in the Agenda Bill, and for the benefit of our large audience, and maybe those on TV, so they'll know what we're talking about. So, I'm coming tonight to request a unfreezing or reinstatement of a position that's been frozen since 2011. So, this is not a request for a new FTE, this is simply reinstating a position that has been frozen. And this really has to do with the hiring process, and the length of time it takes when an officer leaves a department to the time we have a new officer who's solo. In other words, they've gone through all the training and they are on their own now. So, about 20 years ago, the council approved what we call two hire-ahead positions, and they're funded out of the Criminal Justice Fund. And the hire-ahead positions have been very helpful over the years in maintaining our staffing levels when people leave. Again, it takes a long time to replace people. In 2011, the 2011-2012 biennial budget, we had come forward and recommended that due to the recession, we freeze the one hire-ahead position. There's two positions. We recommended freezing one. We had two known retirements early in 2011, and what our plan was just to simply not fill one of those retirements, and that's what we did. In the 2013-14 budget, again, due to ongoing recession impacts on the Criminal Justice Fund, we again kept the position frozen. I was asked during the budget process, this 13-14 budget, Chief, are you comfortable keeping this frozen for 13-14? And I had said, "I am in 13-14, but I will come back to you in the budget of the 15-16 budget with probably a request to fill it." And that's all the more we went at that time. The next biennial, and this is really why I'm coming tonight, the next biennial, the 15-16 budget, I have seven officers that become eligible to retire. And the next biennial budget time, if nobody retires, that number seven goes to 11, and then that number goes to 16. Those numbers are compounding, of course. If nobody retires, it goes from seven, next biennial, to 11, and then to 16. I remind everybody that, obviously, we were not the only department to be hit by the recession, and in fact, a lot of different departments across the state realized the reduction in hiring because people were not retiring during the recession. In fact, the governor put out a directive that the academy could not host a class until they had 30 students in the class. There were that few applicants going to the academy. But now, agencies are hiring. In last week's reporter, you may have seen, says the Washington State Patrol is doing whatever they can to hire more troopers. More than 200 troopers and sergeants are eligible to retire in the next four years. Cities are also experiencing that. People are retiring now, the recession is relatively over, you could argue, and so people are retiring. There's now a five-month wait to get in the academy. I talked to the director of the academy last week, and it's up to five months now. And so, that presents a difficult choice for agencies. So, if I can't hire somebody or get them in the academy for five months, what do I do with them? Logic might say you don't job offer them until the day before the academy starts, but the academy gives preference to those people who have already been hired. So, you have to think about, do I hire this person and try to find them work to do for five months, or do I wait? Compounding that problem is the fact that if I choose not to hire this person till the day before the academy, a different agency may job offer them and say, "I'll hire you today." So, we compete with each other in that arena. So, again, we have to be mindful of the wait that is inherent now as the economy has changed, and also mindful of the fact that we don't always job offer everybody we see. A few years ago, we went through a hiring process, and the two commanders and I, we sit in a room and we are there making the decision, do we offer a job or not? On one iteration, we chose not to. We didn't feel like they would be a good fit for this community. We started all over, went through it again, and again for the second time, we decided not to hire anybody in that pool. It wasn't until a third iteration of applicants that we decided to hire somebody. Reason I bring that up is just, again, to emphasize, hiring process takes a long time, and depending on all the different factors, it could take a lot longer than normal. I think hiring somebody is probably one of the most important decisions we make. Who do we bring into this community and give them the power of arrest, power to go in your homes? It's a very, very important decision, so we certainly take our time with that. So, we have the new hires that go through the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. We also have lateral officers, and those are applicants that come to us with experience. Lateral applicants, those that have experience, don't need to go through the four-and-a-half month academy, and they don't need to go through typically a four-month field training program. They can be solo from the time we hire them, they can be back on their own in about two or three months, depending on the candidate. I had lunch with the man who runs our training program, or the testing program, and I asked him, I said, "John, what is, what's the pool of ladders looking like these days?" He said, "The pool of ladders is pretty low." He says, "You get people that are leaving agencies for a reason, they're trying to run from something, the pool itself is small, and those candidates that are good, all the other agencies compete for them." We all get it, that hiring a lateral makes a lot more sense than hiring an entry level. You have experience, you don't worry about them getting into a field they don't want, and they have proven themselves already. So, ladders are certainly attractive. But I want to be clear on this. The reason I'm coming to you tonight is for an operational need. I don't want to get behind the eight ball. I mentioned before, we have seven officers that are eligible to retire in the next biennial. The average age of a left-one officers who retired was 53. Now, we've had two, only two retire so far under the left-two program. One was 56, one was 58, so you could argue the average, but it's only two, is 57. So, again, the seven who are eligible to retire in the next biennial, they will be 57 years old, which is right where we're at with the left-two. So, again, making the position of the request now rather than during the budget process really is driven by a unique opportunity we are faced with right now. So, we have a former Mercer Island police officer who spent the last 10 years in California. She's returning here in October. She worked for us for four years, moved to California, has continued her career in law enforcement down there, and she's moving back up here in October. And she's been really clear, she wants to get a job as a police officer, and I'm certain if we don't hire her, then someone else will. She's going to be considered a lateral, and she could be solo on her own in two to three months. So, the funding for this, bringing her back in the last quarter of 2014, we could absorb her in our current budget. However, since the CJ, Criminal Justice, revenues continue to lack, we would recommend, beginning in 2015, taking the IT costs for the police department that live in the Criminal Justice Fund and moving them to the General Fund. That added $122,000 in coverance to the General Fund, would be offset by savings from lower-than-expected benefits costs. So, with your approval, I'd like to take advantage of an opportunity to fill a position that was temporarily frozen, as we're faced with a spike in pending retirements. I think this is prudent, so we don't get behind the eight ball, if you will. So, with that, I'm happy to open it up for questions.
Questions? Thompson.
Chief, I want to say I appreciate you being proactive and trying to deal with the possible retirement issues that may be facing the department. You know, one question I have, and I think we chatted about this a little bit in the Public Safety Committee meeting, was you had the funding covered for the last quarter of 2014 and for 2015, but going forward, and maybe there's a question for Chip, I guess, so your offset in 2015 is the savings from the lower cost of employee benefits, but is that lower cost going to go, continue on so that in 2016, 2017 going forward, is the General Fund going to have sufficient funds to cover this additional IT cost that we're shifting over from the police department?
In a word, yes, I believe so. Again, this benefit savings was totally unexpected, it's this year, and in terms of medical and dental insurance costs, they did not go up. Those rates were stayed the same in AWC for this year. That generated in the General Fund about 100 and, almost $90,000 in budget savings, if you will, this year. I view it as ongoing, that continues, and that's what I would propose using as a funding source for this particular issue.
Are those healthcare savings from Obamacare?
Not related to Obamacare whatsoever.
Debbie and Mike, or, sorry, Debbie and Dan.
Yeah, thanks very much for filling in the background, both in terms of the recruitment process, as well as the potential to bring back someone to the island. But that's one person, and what you've outlined for us is a situation that seems far more dramatic than one person. So, just, we'd like to get your ideas and your thoughts, as we go from whether it's seven, you know, five, six, or seven, to 11, to 16, what is the plan to, to take care of this potential death of qualified candidates? Do we, do we have one? Can we come up with one?
Well, that is a great question, and I thought I would start by, at least, start by unfreezing an existing position, and then if we need to, I mean, I want to be very careful if I ask for positions, that I do it based on sound data, and I think I have that for unfreezing this position. We've been down two and three officers before, and it becomes very difficult to fill some shifts. So, I guess we'd have to cross that bridge when we get there, but it is on my mind, and thus, the urgency of at least getting started on this one position, I think is very important. But, yeah, those are ongoing conversations we have to have.
Am I right, if I do rough math myself, of thinking you've got two hire-ahead positions, you have about a year prep time for somebody coming in, and so you're essentially able to feed the system with two per year?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to lose, well, 16 over the course of six years or so, so a little bit more than two a year. It's not too far off. I mean, I guess it's roughly in balance, but you're a little bit shy with that.
Yeah, and that, those are retirements, and we also do have people leaving, resigning. We had two people unexpectedly leave last year. One, one went to a larger department, one went to a department closer to his home, so I mean, it's not just the seven that are eligible to retire that concern me. We also have, historically, we've lost one every other year or so on average to departures out of state. They move like the officers I'm speaking of here, or the two last year that went to other departments in our area.
Okay. Dan?
So, it's interesting. So, what did you do about the two that left last year?
We hired replacements that are in field training program right now. And one is in the academy. We had one officer retire, and two officers left.
So, you had one hire ahead already, so that person presumably took over for one of the two people. And so, then you hired two more people, one to, you hired, you hired one person, well, you hired, you had to hire two people, basically. One to fill the hire-ahead position that you presumably used to take care of one of the people that left, and then, then one to, and then you had to hire somebody else. I mean, so what did you, again?
We had three people leave, one retired, and two went to other agencies. So, one of those positions that left, you could think of as the hire ahead.
Right.
And two of the positions as regular General Fund positions, so.
So, those two positions are still not fully up to speed yet?
Right, we have two that are in field training, they've been through the academy, they're in the Field Training Officer Program right now, and one is in the academy currently.
So, of the two, one's in the academy, one's in field training?
Two are in field training, one is in the academy.
Okay. Okay. The, and you were saying the eligibility for retirement, your left-two is what? Is that 50?
53 is the minimum age of eligibility to retire.
And right now, you've got, and sorry, next year, you're going to have seven people who are 57 years old?
We'll have six in 2015, seven in 2016, so.
They're 57 or 53? Because you had said you've got seven to a, at 57 years old when you were talking.
The average 57. The average 57 years old of those seven.
Really? That's, that's true. So, they're all over 53, but the average age is 57?
Correct.
Of the seven of them. And so, essentially, I take that to mean that all seven of them are also, are already eligible for retirement now for all intents and purposes, probably?
No, they are, actually, we have, in 2014, there are four that are 53 or older. And in 2015, next year, it goes to six, and then in 2015, still, next year's biennial, it goes to seven. So, that number almost doubles from where it is right now.
You may want to, I don't want to get into it, but you may want to check your math, because that's going to be awful hard to get an average of 57, if you got three people who are about to just hit 53 years old, if the average is 50.
It is, I have officers who are in their early 60s who are working here, so that loses a number up.
So, I told Noel that I was going to ask this of you, and I understand that he had related that to you, that when we did the CBA, we asked this very, we raised this very issue as to how are you going to evaluate the CBA if you change your hire-ahead situation? And so, at this point, my understanding is you're still developing your metrics on evaluating the CBA, so how do we, how do we know when you're going to be able to get back to us and tell us that you've got some metrics that you can evaluate the CBA change?
Well, we plan to come to the Public Safety Committee the end of May, and I think the discussion we had earlier with the councils that we would come, and it would be an agenda item on the council's mini-planning session in June.
Collective bargaining agreement?
And so, for the last three, when we look at, I had understood one of the questions to be concerned about apples-to-apple comparison, if we hire or bring back a frozen position, what does that do? The good news here is that we've had these hire-ahead positions for about 20 years. So, only, it was only the last three years that we've had the position frozen. So, we certainly have historical data to go back and compare to 12s with historical data. And I talked to the sergeant this afternoon, anticipating the question, the sergeant who's going to be helping with the analysis, and he said, "Yeah, we can insert an additional officer when we look back, we could overlay an additional officer." It's not a precise science, and certainly the Public Safety Committee, well, all the council, while at the planning session, will hear of some of the challenges in trying to have it be perfectly compared, a six-and-three versus a 12, when some decisions would be made differently if we were on a thin shift in the six-and-three versus a fatter shift under the 12s. You may not send somebody to training, for example, if the staffing was at minimum, whereas, under a fatter shift, if you will, you might send somebody to training, or approve in a vacation day. So, there are some decisions that would be made differently under different models, but for the most part, we'll try to account for all that and factor that in.
So, okay, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to wait to see what you come back with, but it's, I mean, I don't know how you're going to do the metrics. I'm not familiar enough with the numbers, but I remain, I still believe that the change we made under the collective bargaining agreement was a major change, and, and we need to be able, over the next, over 2014, to be able to evaluate that before we get locked into it for eternity. So, I'm hopeful that you'll figure something out that reflects this. But this person wouldn't come on until October's?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got, and you've started, what, March 1, you started the new?
No, actually, the end of this month is going to be May 1, but we, actually, it's going to be a few days before that. It'll be the end of April. No, you had, yes.
It'll be the end of March, by the way.
I'm sorry, end of March. So, end of this month.
Okay, so you'll have a few months before she comes on to do it. The Fire Department doesn't do hire-ahead, do they?
No. And I don't know, I honestly don't know what their process looks like.
They don't, so you don't know the, the knowledge? I assume you don't know whether they've got any of the similar issues?
Not that I'm aware of, and I don't believe, I think you're correct, I don't believe they do a hire-ahead type position in the Fire Department.
All right. Dan? Anyone else? Tom?
Thank you. So, as we're talking about what's coming up, and with the likelihood that they'll be, could be up to 16 turnover in their next six years, can you maybe talk to us a little bit about the experience mix and the importance of having people at different levels? I imagine if we're talking 16 new or 12 brand-new cadets, have the academy fitting into the existing department and experience load? I'm wondering, when you say somebody's, there's a potential to have someone kind of mid-level, I'm just wondering what the. I'm just wondering what the balance and the importance of having experience and seniority versus new police officers, and how that works in the department?
Well, it always strikes me when people retire, and not only from this department, but I see other chiefs, or a sheriff doesn't get re-elected, or a senior officer retires, out the door walks thirty years, twenty-five years of experience. And certainly, there is a significant incremental increase in value when people have been around a while. You see, with the new officers, they try their best, but they just don't have a lot of experience from which to pull when dealing with some really difficult situations. So if I have a chance to hire a lateral, doesn't mean I always do, we've interviewed laterals, and clearly they are gonna be a great fit for a different city, but not this one. But if I have a lateral who comes with, for sake of example, here, fourteen years, so that's mid-career, good mix of experience, that helps to balance out the fact I have two, an FTO, and one in the academy who've never been police officers before. So certainly when I have a good candidate who has experience, that translates into experience on the road. Right away, they hit the road with fourteen years of experience and training, all the training that's gone with that, too. So certainly to add clarification to the question, yes, if I can get experience all day long, I'll look at that first.
I'd like a motion.
One more question, just a-
You can.
Chip, just on this benefit savings, something in the back of my mind's nagging at me that I've heard about this one before. Has this come up in any of our prior meetings, this benefit savings, or is this brand-new?
Excuse me, I may have mentioned it at the mid-biennial budget review, I don't recall specifically.
So we haven't used this to justify some other change we've already made?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Chip. I'm curious to know about other departments in the city, how their IT costs are accounted for? Do they come out of the general fund, or that department's fund, if it's separate, like this was?
Yeah, for the most part, they come out of the general fund. The exceptions are if it relates to maintenance, in particular benefiting the water, sewer, stormwater utility, they have their own funds, and so it hits those funds.
But this will be a permanent change coming out of the general fund, then?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion?
Please do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to feel that please hire a head position that has been temporarily frozen since two thousand and eleven.
Second discussion.
Mike?
Well, I'm certainly going to support this, and Chief, it looks like, not soon enough, but I know you're gonna manage, it looks like some challenging numbers for you with the ages and whatnot, but I have great confidence that you'll manage that well. Now, one thing I want to say is that police officers, public safety is certainly a priority as a result, should be financed first in our general fund. The funding of this, it's going from one pot to the next, it's hard to quite understand how it will be sustained over the next biennium, but what I, what I don't want to happen is that when we start doing the biennium budget, that this is the last thing that gets funded, and it becomes to the point to where the only way to fund this police officer priority is that we raise taxes. So I am not seeing this as a reason to raise taxes, because public safety gets financed first, and then it's those other lesser priorities that fall off the table before we raise taxes.
Anyone else? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Holmes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We move to Agenda Bill four-nine-three-four, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty, capital improvement program budget kickoff. Welcome, Chip.
Hello again. For those that are relatively new on the council, this is the beginning of our budget, biennial budget process. And what we do as staff is we focus on the CAP first, before moving into the operating budget come towards the end of June. This is very preliminary, and while we provide some forecasts, these forecasts change at multiple points during the year. So very preliminary, not carved in stone, by any stretch of the imagination. Francie, go over the forecasts, but I wanted to see up just a kind of a couple of issues, that's really the crux of why we're here tonight, as well as just to orient Benson and to help both Debbie and Tana in general a little bit, just kind of re-remember what's involved in going through this CAP process. So we'll touch on the CAP calendar, I'll remind you about how the CAP projects are organized in the budget document. Francie will cover both REIT and the motor vehicle fuel tax revenue forecast. I'll take your, whatever you want to call it, on the projected utility rates. I'll share with you the two thousand and thirteen year-end variable fund balances, remind you of what are the CAP-related results from the June two thousand and twelve biennial citizen survey, and then I'll tape three significant issues, one of which you've already heard related to the negative street fund, the projected negative street fund balance in sixteen. So after tonight's meeting, the next time you'll see the CAP is on June sixteenth. That's what's called the CAP preview. And it's a significant meeting, there's a chance to go through and reveal the projects, we focus on the coming biennium, and we also focus on anything that's totally new, hasn't been part of the six-year CAP before, and kind of draw your attention to those things in particular. And then we take counsel of questions and feedback, and then fold that into the budget document, which we put together in September, and distribute to you on October sixth. Your next time to then review the CAP portion of the budget will be on November third, that's our scheduled budget review meeting for the CAP, and you can give feedback to staff, make decisions at that point, and your last bite at the apples on two weeks later, November seventeenth, to wrap up any changes to the CAP at that point in time. Also, I should mention, on November third, if there's a reason for us to adjust our REIT forecast, that's another point in time which we look at, Francie looked at it through almost October, and will give you the latest and greatest on that.
Let me ask a question on that, Chip.
Sure.
You'll go back, please. At that June sixteenth CAP preview meeting, what assumptions have you made for that meeting on revenue with taxes?
Well-
If any? Are you looking for direction for us on taxes at that point, or have you already made assumptions?
We will be doing another revenue forecast through May, okay? And if we feel it's appropriate, based on looking at the number of sales, and the average sales price, or any other economic news we need to take into consideration, if we feel it's appropriate, we will amend the forecast that you'll see tonight, and fold that into the June CAP preview.
And then for property taxes, where have you made, is your preview slash recommendation going to be based upon some sort of property tax increase at that point?
No, no, the property tax is about the operating budget, not about CAP, with the exception of the levy, if it's currently in place, that's, we'll fund the debt service and the fire station.
So we'll not talk about property taxes at the June sixteenth meeting?
No.
Okay.
Almond?
There are a couple of little pieces of property tax. King County, there's a parks levy that we receive a chunk of, about ninety thousand dollars, and that's dedicated to parks and trails, but in terms of the city-specific property tax, no. All right, real quickly, how the CAP is organized, first of all, it's organized by six-year plan. Is it a capital investment plan project, okay, meaning it's an existing asset, major maintenance of, a replacement of an existing asset, or is it a capital facilities plan item? Brand-new, a new, in addition to existing assets. Then we organize it by project category, and then by project status. What do I mean by that? Project categories, and these four familiar categories, street and pedestrian facilities, followed by parks, recreation, open space, then general government, which includes your buildings, your technology, your equipment, and your vehicles, and finally utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater. Then in terms of project status, it's either designated as funded or unfunded slash partially funded. And then in each of those two, it's either an existing project with no change, except maybe a minor inflationary change, a modified project with a scope or timing, or it's a brand-new project. And again, we tend to focus on the coming biennium, so it'll be fifteen, sixteen, plus, if there's any significant modifications, we'll look at those, or if there's any new projects you haven't seen before in the six-year CAP, we'll put a spotlight on those. With that, let me invite Francie up to run you through REIT and the gas tax forecasts.
Okay, for the record, Francie Lake, Deputy Finance Director. And before we start looking at the specifics of REIT, I thought for Benson, and for those of you who are newer to the council, I would just go back through kind of the basics of what real estate excess tax is. Real estate excess tax is the half a percent tax that's paid by the seller in property transactions, and it is restricted by state law specifically to be used for capital purposes. So it comes in two parts, REIT one and REIT two. REIT one is the first quarter of a percent of the sales price, and that can be used for streets, parks, facilities, or utilities. And by city policy, we distribute our REIT one revenue to the street fund, and it gets used for streets and pedestrian and bike facilities. REIT two is the second quarter of a percent of sales, of the sales price, and it can be used for the same capital purposes, except for it cannot, it cannot be used for facilities, I've got this reversed, cannot be used for facilities, and it's actually REIT one that goes to the CAP fund, and it's REIT two that goes to the street fund. So because we pay for both building maintenance, as well as parks, out of the CAP fund, that we use the REIT one to pay for the CAP fund projects.
Well, the joke's on me, I've gotta share this.
This is partly for you.
I wonder, over and over and over, first quarter, okay, and the second quarter, what about the third and fourth quarter?
I'd love to have a third and fourth quarter.
I'm afraid, not quarter of a percent, but-
Ah, got it.
Okay, so just one last clarification, REIT, either REIT one or REIT two can be used for equipment or technology, those have to be funded by some other revenue source. Okay, so let's look at the history on REIT. This is looking at the last ten years, two thousand and four through last year, two thousand and thirteen. And the top gold line is our actual REIT revenue for the last ten years. I wanna just point out a couple things about the more extreme points. So in two thousand and five, we had four large real estate property sales. Shorewood Apartments sold for a hundred and forty million, Farmers Insurance Building sold, and then two other commercial buildings sold for a little bit higher amount, ten and eleven million. Those four commercial sales made up one million of that three point seven one million. If you were to take those four sales out, you would have a nice smooth curve from two thousand and four to two thousand and six. So four commercial sales made that spike in two thousand and five. Then travel along the curve, when you hit the Great Recession, two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, you see the number of sales, which is the red line below, that's where we really hit the drop in the number of sales. And as you see, our real estate revenue also dropped in two thousand and eight. Real estate excess tax is very largely driven off the number of sales. It is also driven off the average home price sale, but numbers make a big difference. So that drop in the number of sales really drove the drop that you start to see in revenue in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and nine, or what's kind of interesting is our average sales price went up from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight. We actually hit our high in terms of the average sales price of one point two million on a home, and then two thousand and nine, it dropped to eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, that average dropped. So that second low point is really being driven by the drop in the average sales price. Okay, then picking it up the very next year, two thousand and ten, we get a spike up again. That spike up is largely, again, related to Shorewood Apartments sold for a second time, which is amazing, and that generated five hundred and forty thousand in REIT. Again, when you take that one sale out, you get a nice smooth curve from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen. Let's see. I think that kind of, just, a couple, another thing, the last four years, our average home sale price has gone up by five point seven percent on average a year, and the number of sales, and you can see are climbing nicely, have been going up on average over the four years, sixteen and a half percent. Okay, let's look at the forecast for the next six years. I think we've taken a conservative approach here. We're showing an average increase in the sales price of five percent a year. I think, you know, that may get a little sketchier when you get out to the fifth and sixth year, but I think it's solid for right now. Definitely fits with the last four years, it's even a little lower than what we've been experiencing. And then with the number of property sales, it just looks like a very kind of bland forecast, but five hundred is our long-term average number of sales. I don't weigh at four hundred and ninety-two last year. We do, in the first two months of this year, have more, a few more sales than we did in the first two months of last year. I think five hundred is reasonable for this year and for the coming biennium. So like Chip said, we will review the REIT forecast again with the CAP preview in June, with the budget document distribution in October, and then again with the preliminary CAP budget in November, so.
So you think, when you say long-term, you're talking two thousand and four, back to two thousand and four, you think it's valid to even pay attention to anything, that craziness of pre-recession numbers? Wouldn't we just-
I do, I think-
-look forward to the new normal?
And our sales go up and down, they've hit a high of six hundred, but I really do think five hundred is kind of, is our kind of long-term average. If anything, we've added a few homes and a few condos, so in the long term, you know, I do, I think the turnover rate, I think people move more than they, than they ever have. I think it's reasonable.
Benson?
Yeah, I have similar concerns or questions regarding the assumption of five hundred. I guess, personally, I'm more comfortable with, you know, I'm not sure where the basis is of the five hundred, I know you went back before two thousand and eight and started looking ten years, and that-
I've been tracking since ninety-seven.
Yeah, okay, I feel pretty comfortable at five hundred. I'm wondering what, is it just historical numbers that you're looking at, or as far as forecasting, is there any other reference that you're looking at? I'm just trying to-
Well, we've gone, we've hit two high points in that last period, five hundred and sixty-three sales and six hundred and three sales. I do think, and the real estate market goes up and down, a number of sales, you go up and down. I think when you look at it on this sort of long-term period, to assume five hundred on average is reasonable. Some of those years, we might be, we might see a drop in the real estate market, say in two thousand and eighteen, but to be able to predict that, I'm not gonna try to do that. Do you want to?
In addition, looking historically, we also use the Puget Sound Economic Forecaster, it's Conway and Peterson, local guys in Seattle, and they provide some, they don't go too far out in the future, but it's included in the Agenda Bill, we'll see, a little bit more conservative than they are going forward. One thing that we know always happens is there are major commercial property sales. You can never predict them, but they always happen, and that's what makes me comfortable for the six-year forecast, and this is very preliminary. This is, it's really too early, this is just a starting point, and we'll refine this multiple times, but we'll have some of these really significant sales that'll generate major revenue, and so we have a down year, that significant sale, or sales, commercial property sales, would make it- would make up for that down revenue. That's been our experience. So that's why we think this is conservative, and we take that into consideration as well.
Just, Benson, just keep in mind, really, the numbers beyond the upcoming biennium are of no consequence, other than it's nice to have a crystal ball, but we're not making any decisions based upon those numbers beyond the biennium. And truth be told, we're all actually not making any decisions really beyond 2015, because if everything goes to hell, or we have a boom instead, it's, they're going to be back to us later in 2015, wanting to redo the numbers for 2016, which is what we'd expect them to do. So really, the projections, I think we need to focus on 2015, to a lesser extent, 2016. But beyond that, it's nice to see it, but it's going to change, and we'll deal with it then.
All right, onward.
Okay. So motor vehicle fuel tax. This is a revenue to the street fund, really the only other revenue aside from real estate excess tax. And motor vehicle fuel tax is a fixed tax that's charged per gallon of gasoline purchased. It's not a sales tax, so it's not on the dollars of the sale. It's on gallons of fuel. And when you look at this graph, just keep in mind, the fuel tax rate was increased from 28 cents a gallon to 37 and a half cents a gallon over the period 2005 through 2008. So when you see our revenue going up, that is directly related to the state law that was put into place to increase the fuel tax rate over that four-year period. Then, in general, for Mercer Island, our revenue tends to decline because motor vehicle fuel tax is a state-shared revenue. It is distributed based on population of incorporated cities and towns. So for Mercer Island, we tend to lose as other areas incorporate. We're not incorporating. In addition, our population doesn't tend to grow as quickly as some other areas within the state. So in general, our revenue is declining. So I will just add, but the decline that you see again in 2008 and 2009, that's right, in that Great Recession period, so I think that was an economy-related decline in revenue as well as that population effect that we get. I think when you look out in the more recent years, '11, '12, and '13, that's more our current pattern. So the forecast then for fuel tax is, you just see that gentle decline. I basically have it declining at 2.5% a year, a little bit less in '14, because I think we're still getting some of that economy pickup. But then beyond 2014, I'm just forecasting that slow decline in that revenue. So any questions about fuel tax? Okay.
All right, on.
Almost there, folks. Okay, real quickly, utility rates, believe it or not, you've actually seen this before and noted that in your agenda there. You saw the water and sewer projections of 8 and 8.5% respectively last November, as part of the mid-biennial budget review. You also saw these projections two years ago when we were going through the '13, '14 budget process. So these aren't new. Why do they seem so high? Because, as you've heard me say, approaching the ad nauseam, your water and sewer infrastructure is measured not in feet, in miles. And it's very, very old. You have significant chunks of water mains and sewer mains which are beyond 40, 50 years old. And what I worry about as a financial planner is I don't want all this come and do for replacement at the same time. I want to start accumulating resources so we can meter this out over a period of time. That's the way I approach this. There also goes the 10-year period from '94 to 2003, where the council at that time did not increase the sewer rates. There is, you'll hear me talk about the law of the harvest. You re-budge yourself, this is the consequence of that. And the good news is, and I haven't looked at it for '14 yet, I'll have Francie pull this together, but when we looked at this a year ago, when we look at our utility rates compared to the King County average of other cities, we're about 12 and a half percent below that average. That surprised me, quite frankly. But I use that as a bit of a gauge, a metric, that, you know, are we, you know, reasonable or not? And we're not the only ones with significant rate increases. Bellevue had double-digit rate increases that they passed a year ago. And so, again, I have no incentive, in fact, I have the complete opposite incentive. I have the incentive to bring to you ridiculously low rates, because I do not benefit personally by showing those rates. But this is all about stewardship, it's all about managing risk, period. And so Tom's been on the utility board, and we have a very thoughtful group that asks lots of, the diverse group asked lots of great questions of staff. And at the end of the day, I'm just the finance guy, but I've been here long enough, and I've talked to engineers long enough, and I monitor our insurance claims as well, that I would tell you, in my opinion, those rate increases should be higher. What we don't get credit for, and we don't often advertise to you, guys, as the council, is that I'm already trying to tap this down, because especially during the recession, we're trying to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, the rate increases, it hurts, but you have a lot of stuff to take care of. It may not be popular to talk about, or really interesting, but the responsibility is huge. And so this actually represents at least two percentage points, if not a little bit more than that, less than where I think they actually should be. But that's just my opinion. Questions on these, again, these are just projected at this point. We go through this process and look at these very, we don't just take these as given, but we are very thoughtful as we do a six-year utility CIP, again, trying to plan things out. And you'll see we're accumulating fund balances in anticipation of a major project a couple of years down the road. That's all about spreading the rate increase over a longer period of time. Year-end fund balances. These are preliminary. Okay, this hasn't been audited yet as of the end of last year. What I'm showing you here, I've broken into two sections, general government-related funds and utility funds. And so you'll see the street beautification, more percent for rates, capital improvement, technology and equipment in the Capital Reserve, add them all up, there's available fund balances of just shy of 4 million, 3.91 million. We'll factor that in to the coming six-year CIP. We'll be looking at that for general government projects, not utility projects, using that chunk of change for projects in this coming six-year period, but in particular for the coming two-year, '15 and '16 year period. You'll see that, I have a couple of columns for reserves. There are reserves in each of these funds that are for very specific reasons. There's also, the C slash O is a carryover. So for example, we had some projects that didn't get completed last year, we need to carry over the balance of that project budget to finish the project. Or we had a planned use of fund balance when we adopted the CIP. And so the fund balances reserved for that particular purpose. Looking at utility funds, you'll see water, Scott, 3.29 million, sewer, a penalty, $259,000, and stormwater, 1.76 million. One of the reasons, water actually ended up being a little bit higher than we had originally projected for two reasons. One is remember that the first till property that sold, we did very, very well, and brought in much more than we thought and we expected, we thought we were going to get. And so that bumped us up $100,000, that was very helpful. It's, also was a water utility project, I and Crestway, which was originally proposed, and the council, as during the '13, '14 budget process back in 2012, decided, no, let's not do that project. We subsequently, at the mid-biennial budget review last year, end of November, staff said, we need to do that project. And so that got added back in. So that balance is a little higher than projected, because that project, it just got pushed out a little bit. But it's slated for this year, I believe, right, Francie?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Real quickly, if only if you find it interesting, I'd like to share what I view as the CIP-related results from the last biennial citizen survey, that was in June of 2012. One of my favorite questions is, we ask people, what is the most important problem in your view facing the city at that time? Back in 2012, not surprisingly, it was education, school funding, because the bond issue had failed. Like that 29% of the vote. But after that was traffic, transportation, and parking, giving 14%. The next four ratings relate to the job the city's doing and a number of things, for example, maintaining parks, trails, open space. 86% said good or excellent. The job the city's doing, maintaining streets, 67% good or excellent. Maintaining sidewalks, pedestrian bike facilities, 64%. And protecting the environment and water quality, 75%. I mentioned that, just if I were in your shoes, I would just find that, I'd find people's perceptions interesting and instructive. Okay, finally, there are just three related issues to tee up. This was some preliminary reaction and direction from the council. First is, I always tee up at the bottom Exhibit 1, what are all the CIP-related budget policies? And I'll give you a little summary across two pages in Exhibit 1. Street fund balance, which we talked about a couple of council meetings ago, we talked about the, had the transportation study session. And so I'll just reiterate what I heard the council say. And then finally, our community center, there's an equipment in front of Sheen's sinking fund, funding issue that I've been sharing with the council, and I need to remind you of its needs. So our intention as related to the current, currently adopted CIP-related budget policies is to follow these policies unless otherwise directed by the council and the issues that follow. And this includes how we distribute our REIT, for example, which is 50/50 between our capital improvement fund and our street fund. And Francie's, in my judgment, that's the right split. That's been in place now for a while. That's just one example. Questions on that particular issue? You can reference Exhibit 1 if you want to see the summary of the budget policies. It's pretty straightforward.
Seeing none.
Okay. Next, street fund balance. Again, you've already seen this, hopefully this is still fairly fresh in your memories, but just to briefly remind you, projected to go negative in 2016. Might be able to extend that out here, depending on what kind of REIT we bring in this year or next year. You know, there are the King County Transportation Benefit District ballot measure, and that occurs on April 22nd. If that's approved, and they're saying we'll get about $600,000 a year, but if that's approved by King County voters, that would likely solve our projected deficit problem. I have one caveat there, and that is, with the school bond measure passing, it's a great problem to have, but there's the potential for significant traffic capacity and pedestrian improvements related to the '14 and '15 school projects, right? And so that has not been factored into the six-year CIP whatsoever. And those would be significant costs. But that also involves discussions about level of service, et cetera, et cetera.
I want to comment on that. The going negative, I don't like going negative. And I would prefer, I would prefer on these budgets, that instead of going negative, we make the hard decisions on what projects we're able to finance, and those good ideas that we're not able to finance, we put off maybe to a column, a holder column. I know we've talked about that several times, but I just wanted to bring it up once again.
And in essence, that's what we do. I can't go negative. And even when we had, back during the recession, back when in '08, when you approved the '90-10 budget, and the market crashed in October of our REIT, and we had a budget, and turned up, the REIT forecast was still too high after I'd cut it significantly, we lived within our means. We will always see that.
I always see TIPS and SIPs and other projects where in the out-years were in negative territory.
Yes, we try to show you what we think are the needs. And these usually aren't wish list items, they're significant capital needs. And then we show you existing and projected funding sources and how they match up. And so that informs you, and then if you're, at minimum, we have to balance the biennium, but we do think in six-year terms, and we try to paint a picture for you, that if you agree that, yes, these are important projects, then you have some funding decisions to make. Either about deciding we're going to do less of this, so we can do more of that, you know, this other thing, or looking at some additional funding sources.
Yeah, I didn't mean, I certainly didn't imply that they were not well thought-through projects. I just would like us to make that decision, so we don't give our citizens a false sense of anticipation there. But that's, we can go around in circles on that. A question I have on page nine of the street fund balance, I'm uncomfortable with the statement that is there, the very last two sentences about making the, it seems, it's a blanket statement. I don't think that was the intent. Blanket statement about dropping level of service from C to D or E. I'm hoping that the decision to go from C to D or E is one that still gets entertained to the council, intersection by intersection by intersection, unlike this blanket statement.
Yes, I should have added, I added it to my PowerPoint, I should have added four specific intersections. Patrick mentioned to you that it doesn't have to be a blanket standard. It can be if you want. We have the flexibility, do it by intersection, or do it by, you know, you can approach it from a different perspective as well, but you can parse it.
So we haven't dropped, we haven't dropped that, and I know the direction that Patrick was that, in general, we understand why you'd want to go to D.
That's right. No, that'll come back to you later for a decision.
Okay, great.
And as promised, I think it came from you, Mike, we want, we promised, you know, be at the June CIP preview, we would give you a sense of, so what does a D intersection or E intersection look like, feel like, in terms of the rate? And so we promised to get back to you.
While we're kind of going down that path, I'm hoping it's going to be more of a feel. I'm hoping it's going to be actual traffic counts versus a feel.
Yeah. Those traffic standards are based largely on delay, how many cycles of the lock.
I understand that, but that's not a feel, that's.
Well, it's more than traffic count. It's how quickly you can get through the intersection. So I think it does have a feel component, or it has a time component.
Yeah, time component. Feelings associated with rating.
Yes, actually, as measured by time, but not a feel.
Happy, sad.
Okay, so in addition to the LOS, and yes, that's a correct clarification, it doesn't tend to be blanket, also maintaining our current paving, examples.
Just to harp on what Mike has said a little bit, more than just specific intersections, I think the council is going to want to weigh in on, I mean, we're going to want to hear, we propose, we staff proposed to reduce this intersection, this intersection, and this intersection to this level, and here's what that looks like. Rather than give you a yes or no, doing it, and you staff go sort of pick the poison. The council's going to want to be more involved than just that level. I think I'm just saying what he said, and you've already said you're fine with that, but I just reiterate.
Yeah, this, under growth management, this is a council decision. You make that decision as part of our planning.
But this, I mean, there's some very sweeping statements up there, Chip, and I don't want them to come back to haunt the council. We have, you're going to come back to us with, as part of the TIP process, and you're going to make some proposals regarding street improvements. And some of them, we may be, we're probably a D or E already, so the truth be told, and the world's not coming to an end. And the alternative that I'm sure staff will come back to us and say, if you want to drop back down to C, you got to add a traffic light. And that has all kinds of issues, other issues on the island, because of people's general aversion to adding traffic lights. So it is, I'm not sure where we're going to go with this. I think you're just going to have to come back to us at the TIP, and then Patrick's going to have to make his recommendations and tell us what we have money for, what we don't have money for, and we're going to have to decide whether we're going to do the TBD, if the King County thing doesn't pass. My guess is if the King County thing passes, it's Christmas in April for Mercer Island. If it doesn't pass, we've got some very hard decisions to make.
Yeah, don't feel cornered. This is, again, carved in jello, and you always. This is, again, carved in jello, and you always reserve the right to amend your opinion, change your mind, because you don't have that information that I do have, if I were in your shoes. This is purely preliminary, this is the path we're going down, and.
Strawberry, John, I like strawberry.
Yeah, do that. All right. All right. Finally, the community center equipment and furnishing sinking fund. This wasn't created until the sixth year of operation of the community center in 2011. In '11 and '12, we established an annual sinking contribution of $31,000 a year that was funded really by rental revenue in the community center. Bumped it up for the current biennium to $42,500, with $2,500 a year coming from the Rotary Club, thank you. And for, what I'm preliminarily project, this is a very complicated analysis, but preliminarily, the minimum target needs to be at least $50,000 a year, so that's a $7,500 a year bump. And in addition to that, because there's such a large chunk of time where we made no contributions, I need about $200,000 by 2016. And you'll see when we talk about the disposition of the year-end surplus from last year, I'll bring that to you on May 19th, I believe it is, I'll be proposing that we set aside $100,000 of that to take care of 50% of that funding need, and just handle it while we, you know, as soon as we can right now, and try to handle the other $100,000 a year from now.
What is Rotary with that $2,500, why do they do that?
Yeah, it's an annual commitment. Why do they do it?
People don't know, why is the Rotary giving the community center $2,500?
They like having their lunches there.
Well, I mean, that's why they pay rent. I mean, that's why they pay rent.
Well, yes, they do, but they give.
Jane, you're micro.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, I would rather see the $2,500 go to water in India, many projects that we have, than to subsidize.
They have international programs.
It sounds like a discussion the Rotary should be having.
Yeah. They have their international programs as well, but this is a real local, they are.
I'll bring it up with the Rotarian president.
I've got Rotarian right next to me here.
They have a grants and awards committee in Rotary that decides how they spend the dollars, so they're always looking for additional bodies on the committee.
So that's a grant.
There's a grants and awards committee, they make the decisions.
That happens to be one that I made question.
You're thankful. So, what is staff intending to do? To increase the general fund subsidy beginning in '15 by $7,500, and to accumulate $200,000 between now and the end of '15 to help square away that sinking fund. Questions?
I assume when you come back, because on May 19th, that Jana or someone from Parks and Rec will have a schedule of where this money's going to be spent?
That schedule will be available during the budget process. It won't be available the May 19th. She hasn't updated it yet. She updates it every two years.
I mean, there must be some basis for the $200,000.
There is.
So whatever that basis, whatever you use to make that decision, I hopefully you'll share with the council on the 19th.
Sure, and just to be clear, what it isn't, it's not saying there's $200,000 of expenditures, it's, the way I fund this thing is I try to identify a funding stream that grows in nice, even, and so it don't have up and down. And it just so happens that in that particular year, in 2016, is when I'm expected to have a significant deficit of $200,000. So yes, we can bring to you a listing of the things that are planned for replacement in that particular year.
That'd be good.
That would be covered in the Parks and Rec meeting, I assume, beforehand?
Yes.
Which is next week.
It won't happen that soon, but it should happen this year.
Right, meeting next week, and then, so what it means is we need to make sure that that gets scheduled before May.
Absolutely. Both Jana and Bruce are aware that this issue needs to be brought to the committee.
Mike? Along those lines, I would be, I am curious on how much our, what percentage our workout facility uses. That seems like a high, that seems like a very expensive piece of real estate down there, especially given the many, many, I think another workout place started on the square, and I know there's one down the south end that's asking for business. So I, my curiosity to what the deputy mayor talked about is, how much that real estate is costing the city, and especially in light that there are alternatives from private businesses out there?
How much it's costing the city in terms of the furniture cost?
That's got to be the most expensive room down there. What's your equipment replacement cost? Typically, that type of equipment gets replaced every three years in most places.
That has to be the most expensive room down there.
Yeah, I would suggest that's, let's have Bruce and Jana give us, give us an estimate how often they're replacing it, what the costs are, and we can go from there. What the usage rate is, of course, because not everybody wants to belong to a private vehicle.
I mean, that may very well be, hopefully they're making money off of that. You'd like to think that they're making money off of that.
Well, just breaking even.
At least breaking even. I mean, I would, if they're actually losing money on it, taking into account the cost of the equipment, then that would be of concern to me, as apparently it is to you. But trust, I hope that's one of the revenue, positive revenue parts of operation.
Okay, I'll touch base with them on that.
I know we'll talk about this more in the Parks Department, but I just want to put out there too, that I'm not, that I don't think I share a belief that if it doesn't break even, that I am concerned about that. We fund things like the pool that's recreational for one set of population, and there's a whole other set that might fund their physical activity at the gym and do need it subsidized. So I'm curious as to what that, the costs are, but I think it would be a larger policy decision and conversation to have, without having to write it off immediately and quickly on that.
Okay. With that, is there anything else the council wants to talk about?
Vehicles are funded from the CIP, vehicle replacement.
Yep, it's part of the CIP.
I've said this before, and just, I guess I want to decide, figure out where the council's head is on this one. Yeah, in my experience in budgeting, it's sometimes good, every budget cycle, to do a deep dive into one area, which basically, from a council oversight standpoint, and also from a staff, purposes of ensuring that staff is doing the job that they're supposed to be doing. And it strikes me that in the 14 years I've been on the council, we have never had a review for the council of our whole vehicle program in the city. And that is not just a question of, you know, do we replace them every three years, or four years, or five years, but just how we are deciding how many vehicles we need in the city. And vehicles, I'm talking about everything from small cars to large, heavy equipment that Glenn's group has. I think I've mentioned this before, I was struck when I went up to the maintenance yard about a month ago, and by the sheer number of vehicles up there. It seemed to me, at least on first impression, that we had significantly more vehicles than we had people who we hired to actually operate them. And I'm sure there's good explanation for a lot of the vehicles, but I would, I would like to see the city manager and his staff come back to us with a really in-depth review of our whole vehicle program, how we make decisions on how many front-end loaders we should have in the city, how many cars of whatever nature, how many Jeeps, whatever we happen to have in the city. Unfortunately, organizations, and I found out, I found this in the business I was in, the general tendency is if you buy it, you replace it. And very rarely do people sit back and say, do we need it? And I think it's, before we, to confirm for our own benefit, that we're not on a cycle of, well, we had it so, and it's three years old, and so we had to replace it, and maybe that's not where we're at. But just to confirm that, I would like to see some, how our city manages vehicles, how we make the decisions, that make the decisions on how many vehicles we buy, and are we doing it right? Are we using computer software to make sure we optimize the use of vehicles? Just tell us how you're doing it, and just demonstrate to us that we're being, we're being good stewards of the public money in that regard.
Is there general interest on the council for what?
Okay, well, Mike first, and then I guess Jane, you just weighed in with the vote, but Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to really commend the deputy mayor for suggesting that. I think that's a fantastic idea. I think it's a idea that's well overdue. And I would also like to add, if the council agrees with the deputy mayor, that the staff looks not to justify what they have, but they really aggressively look to make the fleet smaller, and find ways to justify making the fleet last longer, and having, and gain more buck for more use out of our citizens' money. So, deputy mayor, I commend you for suggesting that, and I hope the council will, I guess we just need one more person, right?
Well, before we go there, I'd like a staff response, if I can get one, because there ought to be two sides to the discussion before there's a decision.
Happy to do it. It is, to do it as part of the budget review process will be tough, because we're doing a more streamlined budget review process. I would envision a study session, I don't know if you want to take up your June planning session time for this topic, but that would be another option. My problem is not, it's not a willingness problem, it's a time problem, and I am maxed. And so trying to fade this in, and depending how in-depth you want to go, is going to be a challenge for me to put it together. I can see.
To be honest with you, I'm not too sure it's you that should be doing this. It's more Glenn, and Ed, and Chris, and the people who are actually operating the vehicles. You're just, you're just providing the money for them. They're the ones that are actually telling you, yes, we need this many trucks, and I presume you're not out there saying, how many trucks you need? You shouldn't be, you're the finance director.
There's a fleet committee of which I'm a part, and Glenn's a part, and we oversee it quarterly, and we oversee all vehicle replacements, decisions about whether to extend its life or not. And so I'm intimately involved in those, but each of the members, there's a department representative, and each of these people are, yes, I rely heavily on their judgment and the information that they share with me. I will say, unlike other cities, we don't have a dedicated fleet manager, and so it's a group of us, it's management by committee. Glenn and I kind of take the lead and kind of make the hard decisions. And we do have a consultant, an ex-fleet manager from Tacoma, who helps us a little bit each year. But, you know, do we have it dialed in perfectly? No, we're very lean, and we don't, we don't have it as dialed in as maybe Kirkland, Redmond or Bellevue do, or Sequoia for that matter. But I will tell you, from my perspective, you have to understand, what's my incentive, is my incentive to build a huge fleet, do I have incentive to create this huge fleet which has these huge fleet costs, which then impact the general fund? No. I have the completely opposite incentive.
Chip, let me get you to pause, because you're kind of now trying to go beyond where we are at the moment, I think, in terms of debating whether this is something we want to dive into. Noel, you were on the verge of making a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to add, and the reason Chip jumped in and talked about his time, his personal time constraints, is that he is the leader of that fleet committee. And certainly, if it's the will of council to take a look at fleet and how we manage it, we will figure a way to staff that, and it may not be Chip, it may be some combination of people, we can, we can get that done, depending, of course, on how detailed you want to go. And I just want there to be, you know, some caution that if, as suggested by previous comments, it really, it sounded a little bit like we would be back here, having to defend and justify why we have three riding lawnmowers instead of two. And I, it depends, you know, it's going to depend a lot on to what depth we need to, if we're going vehicle-by-vehicle type, having to justify that number versus a different number, that could be a substantial body of work to really get you all of that analysis. And so I think to some degree, if it's the will of council to do some analysis this year, and I do think it's a good idea, I think it's healthy for every organization to do this type of work on a routine basis, but it, again, it depends on how deep a dive you all want to have, as to whether or not we can get it done in a way that's satisfactory to you.
And let me ask the timing question again with a little bit more open-endedness. So I think Dan's goal is that this information coming from staff inform the council, I think, around, maybe it's sort of, the staff does the work, gives this council confidence, and gives the staff a bit of a reflection back on its own process, that then informs the budget process. So you're asking for it this year because you'd like it to inform the budget process, not saying, let's do this next year.
Right.
What's the timing on which it would need to happen in order to be useful a part of the budget process?
We are finalizing preliminary budget decisions in August, and so it'd have to be before then, before the end of August.
Okay, Jane?
I'm just wondering if there's a way that perhaps at the, just after the quarterly meeting of the, of the fleet committee, using their work and their current information, and doing a light kind of overview report in a study session for the council, so we could maybe get on a schedule so that once a year, we have such a study session on the fleet. And do it somehow in advance of August, but not create a whole lot of new work for you, but tie it in with the quarterly meeting that you're, you know, after the quarterly report, sort of a light overview, and some of the decisions that you'll be making at that quarterly meeting, I presume.
Let me give Benson a shot here.
Yeah.
After Jane, and then Dan will come back to you. So, thank you, Jane.
Yeah, I guess I, I support the deputy mayor's suggestion, I think it's a good one. And, you know, I think it's an important one, because these vehicles are very expensive. I mean, this is not a small item, and I think, you know, the city needs to identify its needs, and whether or not it needs a particular vehicle or what have you. And so I would strongly encourage that we consider doing this this year. I'm not sure if I'm really agreeing with having a light overview. I think if we can get a fairly detailed analysis, that sort of sets, you sort of then develop a process for continuing to review these things as we go along. And so I think it's, would be very helpful as part of this budget cycle, if we could have some greater in-depth analysis about the vehicles. And, you know, I know that puts a hardship on the staff, and I guess maybe, you know, knowing you might have to come back and tell us whether or not, you know, there's need for more staff or something, but I guess, you know, hopefully it can be done. It sounds like it's something that, you know, most organizations should be doing on a regular basis, just identifying what their needs are, and how to go forward from there.
Okay.
Let me also be more specific. I'm not so much looking, Noel, for to find out whether you need three riding mowers or two riding mowers. I'd like to know what you're, how you're monitoring it. I'd like to know, are you keeping track of running hours, for example? So you know how many hours on average a year each piece of equipment is used. So what is your, how do you, how can you look at, in your equipment committee, what are you doing there to say, when you're, when you're having to make a decision on, do we buy another riding mower? You know, do you have the data then to say, well, you know, we're only operating these 500 hours a year, so we probably don't need three riding mowers? Do you have that type of, what process do you have in place that you can sort of demonstrate to us that you're, that you have the ability to make those decisions? And what I don't want is, hopefully, see is a situation where, okay, three years old, you know, the average life of a riding mower is three years old, so therefore we get rid of it, and we add a new one. I want to see that the city actually has a process in place where it can make intelligent decisions by using, you know, whatever data. where it can make intelligent decisions by using, you know, whatever data is out there. And that's what I'm looking for. And, you know, I'm not saying you do and you don't have it, but that's hopefully the way you can inform us.
That helps, yeah. Is that... Is there any agreement regarding that? Just explaining the process we go through?
I think Dan is voicing what I kind of feel is... On the council, we get a lot of information about certain areas, but we've never really gotten a lot of information about those kinds of decisions relating to the fleet. And I think it would be helpful. For example, when Clint comes and he talks about overlays, and we are educated a lot about the decision... Decisions that he makes that affect the budget so that we can feel more confident about approving this and that because we know the decision-making policies are in place and that are happening, and we can have that confidence. So I agree with Dan. It would be helpful because we know less about... We know less about the vehicle purchasing and maintenance and all that than we do about some of the street maintenance.
Let me, I guess, tell the council where I'm landing as I listen to this and see if I can gain support for this. I think an education of a relatively brief education of the council appeals to me this year. And in the out year, a more in-depth look at this if we choose to. But something we would tee up at the planning session next year and say... And maybe as deep as Mike's looking to go, where it's a real two riding lawnmower versus three discussion at that time. But given the crunch staff always finds itself in putting together the budget, I feel what we're... If we go the direction as you've teed it up, Dan, it feels a bit like we're saying, we believe you're not doing this right, and we want to dive into it so we can fix it in time to get the budget to be done right. I don't think that... That's not what you said, but it has a bit that feel to it. And I think that that spins out of control quickly if we actually try and dive to that level and then say, no, no, you got to tweak the budget to do this, but we're already deep into... I mean, you really are deep into your budget process at that point. So that's what I'd suggest, is a light look, maybe at the planning session, followed by, if there's a will on the council, a deeper understanding next year.
Yeah, what I would say is that, first, I'm not presupposing that the system is broken in no way, shape, or manner. I mean, we have a good staff, and I'm assuming that they've got processes in place. I'm just not aware of them. So it may very well be... It may very well be that Chip can walk in, because then they've already got spreadsheets which shows all the equipment, shows the running hours, shows the age, and shows this is how we're doing it. And if that's already there, and it makes sense, and you can show that we're running 2,000 running hours a year per riding mower, and that's a good number, you know, that... All that makes... That would be great. I feel very encouraged by that. So I guess if light means, you know, first that they're going to walk in with the processes and spreadsheets and showing us what exactly they've got, then... And that may be all that's needed, and the council will have to make that decision. If... But it's a little bit hard to... And that may be something we can do in a study session. Or, you know, it's early, it's sometime in April. Because if it's either there or it's not there. But if we don't have the... If we look at the processes and have concerns about them, then that might take a deeper dive into what happens. And the last thing I would suggest is that the council sit here and tell you what the processes are. You know, that's probably outside of our traffic engineer family way. But, you know, but it's just... I guess, maybe we're saying the same thing. I don't know what light means in the context. I just want to see what your processes are for starters, and I think that will guide us in what happens next.
Well, let me add. I mean, we're not doing it just to see the process. I mean, I'm sure that the staff will be able to show us why or write a letter and show us why we need three lawnmowers and why we need to replace it 2,000, et cetera, et cetera. We need to go in there with the objective of improving our replacement cycle, the expense we spend on replacement cycle, or our total fleet valuation by decreasing it 10% or 15% or something to that effect. There's a reason why we're looking at this. We're not looking at it just to look at it and check that block. We're looking at it to save money, to do more with less. And that's the way you want to go into an analysis like this, with the hunger to save our citizens' money, to do more with less.
So maybe what I'm suggesting here is that we... It's a study session, or it's at the June planning session, a bit at your discretion, staff? But let's get... And probably, I guess sooner rather than later, perhaps, is better... If... Let me not, you know, immediately, but give us an hour education on this.
Okay, we can do that. So why don't I...
Chip's still... He's gritting his teeth.
We'll get it done. Let me spend a little time in the next day or so looking at the planning calendar and figuring out where we might plug a study session in this spring so we can get it done. We can get this initial, here's what we do and how we do it, and then we can kind of go from there. But I think we can get that done in the next couple of months and at least get that part finished. And we'll pull it together and get it done.
Are you interested in how we determine replacement rates or operating rates as well? Okay.
I think we have a little good sense of...
You're looking at how you determine the quantity of things you need and how you determine how quickly you turn them over. You know, if at the end of this process, we end up figuring out that we can save money, Mike, that's fantastic. So we'll see.
I'm moving on to another topic.
Do you want to do riding mowers?
I think we've been...
Please do.
All right, good. So I have two questions. Chip, do we anticipate... Does Marshall Allen use the Public Works Assistance account for any of our projects?
Yes, but it's... Yes, Sioux Lake line, but in terms of recently, no. Because there's been nothing, but yes.
I've been wondering if the six-year outlook is assuming any use of that currently? Because it doesn't exist currently.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're... We will. We always keep it in.
Come up to the mic.
Are we assuming in the coming six years?
We're not assuming we'll have any. We always look at our... The projects that are being proposed. And if any of them look like they would qualify for trust fund money and we need to do some debt financing, then we would absolutely be looking at that. So from that perspective, yes. But am I forecasting that we're going to use Public Works Trust Fund money without having it tied to a project? No, I'm not doing that.
Okay, I'm just thinking as we're looking forward at the six-year, if we're anticipating those low rates and they're unlikely, making sure we come in with a realistic estimate of interest costs. All right, thanks. And then on the second one, are we looking at... I've raised this issue before. Are we looking at creating a fire station sinking fund and doing so now at the get-go so we don't have the same issue that in six years or in 10 years, we're like, oh, we didn't have a sinking fund for that, and we need one?
I'd like to answer that question.
Fire station or fire truck?
Fire station.
No, but what we do is... That's what we do and what I would like to do. What we do is, for every one of our facilities, we do a six-year CIP. And it actually goes beyond that, but looking at what are the needs, whether it's painting, replacing lighting, HVAC systems, et cetera, et cetera, inside and outside the building. And so that's put together in a very large format, a very detailed format. Of course, all of our facilities... The community center is special because of all the equipment inside it, and it's unlike any other building in that regard. And so in terms of the fire station, we would treat it like all of the other buildings. It wouldn't have a special sinking fund, unlike the community center. Yeah. Francis reminded me that when we do have excess weight, we, from a major commercial property cell, for example, we usually will share with the council that that would be discussed as part of a year-end surplus distribution. Here are the needs that we're aware of. We have net reserve needs, capital replacement needs, what have you. And so we make you aware of them at that point.
Okay. Other new topics? I think we're set? Okay. Thank you very much. We move to other business. Councilmember absences? There are none this evening. Are there any immediately upcoming?
I'm not here because you moved the council meeting.
So you won't miss the March 31st meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Are we having the Cobal property on March 31st?
So we... Thank you for helping us to segue to planning schedule.
I'm there to serve.
Yes, thank you. No, we aren't. I was going to point out that that, it looks like, is going to land on April 21st. Is that still the latest? So that will not happen on March 31st. Also, just a couple other planning calendar things. I think my memo to you last week indicated we'd have Shoreline Master Program March 31st. That's going to be sometime later this spring. And in the next step, and we'll talk with you more about this, is we will have... We're arranging to have Department of Ecology here to explain their decision and why they've reached the position they've reached. And so we're working on scheduling that, probably May or June.
We may actually be able to avoid this because we'll keep this issue open for so long the lake will actually dry up.
Yeah, that is right, yes. Once climate change fully takes effect. Now, there is no legal clock running, so just I want you all to be aware of that.
In this latest letter they wrote, they moved the goalposts on us again.
Yes, they did.
And can we find out, before we have that meeting, what they did with the other localities on Lake Washington?
Yes.
I mean, whether they did the same thing to them and... Or whether they've previously approved the wider dock lengths for the renovations? Because if you read closely what they did on that, it's outrageous. We had made the rationale, if you recall, that what we were doing was actually going to reduce the total amount of dock space because in the renovations, we're actually reducing it from six feet down to five feet. And so they then announced that, actually, they're going to change renovations from six feet to four feet. So it's like... It's preposterous. I mean, if I was a state representative, I would not let them get away with it.
We should find one to talk to about this. And then the other thing I'd point out, not to bring you down, but it looks like right now, May 5th, you may have another long plat public meeting. So you may want to just keep that in mind as you think about building in some time as we get close to that, to review the record. And we will, yes, we'll get you prepped for that as we get closer.
When do you see the schedule getting populated with comp plan updates?
Let's see here. I think most of those are going to fall at the end of the year and then into next year. Remember, it's June is your final adoption date, next June, not this June.
Right, so you see that, starting the fourth quarter?
In the fall and then first quarter next year, the heaviest period, I think.
Okay. And when is that with the planning... Excuse me, Planning Commission?
That should be going to Planning Commission shortly, as the start of that process.
Because at the risk of opening a hornet's nest, I'm going to suggest that our recent experience around the long plat process makes me think that there might be some comp plan thinking. More deeper comp plan thinking we want to do than simply tweaking around the edges.
Is that comp plan or development code?
Well, that's a quite...
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're working on that. We're trying to look at some of the issues that got brought up over the past with regards to the development... Or with regards to the comp plan. And then I think that what will flow from that also is some of the concerns raised in the actual development code itself. So we're looking at both those.
So, okay. So I'm very pleased to hear that. And so what you're saying is then that we aren't in danger of the Planning Commission kind of chunking through the process without some of those potentially larger inputs and then having to do a quick, late, go-back-and-redo on it?
This is all vested in.
So what is the outreach to our citizens?
This major subdivision is already vested, so...
Well, I understand. I'm not talking about that. But I'm talking... It highlighted a sense that the community may be in favor of some rethinking of what's said in the comp plan and in some of those specific codes.
We've been looking at... We've been talking about looking at the development code for at least a year. And so I do hope that we actually look at the development code sooner than later.
So the planning session... Our planning committee often is under the radar. What is the outreach for citizens to weigh in to the planning committee with reference to the comp plan or development code? Is there going to be a big outreach to the citizens that the planning committees will tee up the comp plan and for them to weigh in?
If you were... You were present at the last, that was the one...
It was a study session that Scott Greenberg came and did all about the whole comp plan schedule and outreach, the whole plan for everything. So, yeah, I mean, it's part of the law, how much noticing you have to do. And he laid out all of the different things that they're planning on doing. So they'll do a lot.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. So, Noel, on March 31st, the investment agenda item there, is that another... I don't see Chip here. Is that another relook like we did with Dan a couple of years ago on where we're investing our funds, or is this just housekeeping stuff?
I believe this is just housekeeping in the usual local government pool, but I'll double-check that and confirm.
Good.
As opposed to doing something new.
A couple of years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we kind of really changed the risk pool where we put that stuff. If that is the case, and I'd suggest that it's not consent.
Debbie?
Thanks. I do not recall from last year whether or not the Kiwanis fireworks sales permit was on the consent calendar or not. I do remember that there was significant discussion about it, but I'm wondering if that's the way it should be calendared for the 19th.
It's always on the consent calendar, but at the time, there was a council member who would always pull it off of the consent.
Okay. Just wondering if there's... Do you not want it in terms of... Do you not want it on the consent calendar?
I would suggest pulling it off the consent calendar now, but I would wait and see.
We'll take that in advisement. We're going to start talking about gateway explosives.
I was just going to do a brief mention because if you have any decision to make changes to the allowing of fireworks, you have to do it like the year before. You'd have to do it this year in order for it to be implemented in 2015.
But that's not the fireworks sales permit. That is for this summer. But my next question was, is I don't actually remember the status on the summer celebrations fireworks this year. Are they funded? And do we anticipate that coming before council?
They'll have to. They're not funded. They're not funded.
I'll double-check and find out exactly where they are in their fundraising.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, board appointments. We actually have one. I hope you all saw it. A member of our senior advisory board, who gamely would like to move to the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board now that we have shifted the senior issues to that board. I'm looking for a motion. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Charles.
So he's appointed for all of two months?
Lucky him. Councilmember reports. I was going... Something before councilmember reports?
I have a question about board appointments. As we're recruiting and asking people to apply to... As we're recruiting and asking people to apply to the different boards and commissions, can you tell us, I remember we had a discussion last year, that I think it was for the Planning Commission, or it might have been for the Design Commission, that there were certain categories that we hadn't filled, and that we were looking for people, like specific engineers, or architects, or certain slots that we either did or didn't fill, or we needed to. And can you give us a little bit more information on that, so that we can encourage those positions?
The Design Commission is the only commission that has any regulations regarding expertise. And so there's an architect, landscape architect, urban planner, and also a business member. So town, someone in the town center that owns a business in the town center. So over the years, it's been hit or miss, whether we can fill all four of those. Right now, we've got a pretty good balance, but there are going to be a couple people that will be moving off, or will become ineligible to serve. So I can do a little analysis for you, and send you an email of what is, what's missing, you know, what hasn't been filled, and then what we're looking for.
What might, Tana raised a good point. What might be helpful in the advertising that you're doing, if it said something along the lines of, I don't know what the role is, but landscape architects are particularly encouraged to apply for Design Commission, but all applicants will be seriously considered. That might not be, that would be language that would sort of help to highlight.
And we used to do that. The best way for us to find members is recruitment through peers. And so I know that, I know that planning staff works really hard with the people who are currently on the commission to find others. My, one of the problems I run into is having a long-winded advertisement that people get lost in. So that's really why I rely on other commissioners for those specific positions. And what, if the positions are not filled, then we really do targeted advertising, where we'd really just go for those positions. So, you know, we have not received any applications for any board or commission yet, and we've been advertising for two weeks. So it's a very big switch from when I started 12 years ago, where we just have stacks and stacks of applications. So it's just different, it's different time and different, you know, changes in the economy. But targeting advertising is more of where we're going than versus just this blanket advertising. So that's definitely, I can definitely adjust some of the ads.
Well, certainly at least letting us know what the, where the gaps are within the Design Commission would be helpful. Councilmember reports, councilmember Cyril. Jan for me, no?
We had a meeting of the Library Committee about now, what, Kirsten, two weeks ago?
A week ago.
Week ago. And it was, I thought it was a productive meeting. There was nine members of the public, plus Benson, Debbie, and myself, and KCLS staff, and a moderator. We went through a whole bunch of topics, and KCLS is now considering the comments that were made, and is going to come back to the committee. Looks like now, beginning of May, will be the next meeting. And we'll find out then how successful this process was, but the committee was relatively uniform in their opinions on most of the issues that were presented to them. So we'll see, and appreciate all the work that Kirsten did in doing the legwork on it.
Debbie?
Yeah, Mike and him were at the Eastside Transportation meeting on, was it Friday? It was Friday. And they will have on their agenda the next meeting, a session that's, I believe, reviewing PSRC tolling strategy. So I think it would behoove us probably to spend a little bit of time understanding more about where that might go, and also what the status is. I know that during the session, things went fairly quiet in terms of what we were doing with regard to the work plan, in particular, our own EIS. And so we need to start kicking that one off again. I do actually have a question for you, Bruce, and that is, during the planning session, we talked about having a downtown committee, people who were looking at it. And I know I have been contacted by several citizens who are interested in being on that particular working body. Do we have any dates, times, names, process?
What we set was a council membership in it. And there was then an intent of having a charter for that group put together.
I think it's been the hardest scheduling meeting I think we've had yet.
And the membership was?
Okay, yes, they were, and let's just make sure we're talking about the right one, because we talked about two, two groups at the, at the planning session. One was the Town Center Visioning Committee, which is Benson, Tana, and Dan, as the council representation. And we also talked about the Town Center Booster Committee, which was, I think, Tana and Jane.
Okay. And the Visioning Committee, it's a visioning process.
Yeah, their, their mission is to define the scope of the visioning, and report back to council in June at the mini-planning session. So we're, we're going to start meeting early April, and I'll present them with a charter for the group, and the goals, and the schedule of how we'll get there. And that's, that's what that group is about. Is that what they were asking about? Was it that group?
Yeah, it is that group. It wasn't per se the booster element, Tana, but I think that's good, to have clarification then, that the community can expect to hear more about what that process would look like.
I'm just relieved, because you asked me the question, and I felt like a deer in the headlights at that point. Yikes, I'm not sure. I assigned them and then got out of the way, and, so. Tana?
I just wanted to point out one thing, that Jane, Debbie, and I are feeling the spirit of St. Patrick's Day, and Ron Green, and all the other stinkers are not.
No, Mike.
Okay, and Mike. And Mike. All right. So, you're certainly having St. Patrick's Day. But Debbie mentioned, reminded me that we don't have a legislative wrap-up on the calendar, and if people want one, maybe you should, I could give one, and I'm sure the other 41st members would love to, or would be happy to. If you just want to have a single one, I'm happy to as well. So let me know. I don't want to offer that if people don't want it, but I'm happy to. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention.
Council, do we want it?
Yeah.
I see nods. I see nods. Okay, let's have it.
The other thing I just wanted to mention is that I was struck when I was down in Olympia at how impressive the Mercer Island City staff is, because there were people then in Olympia advocating as leaders of their professional organizations, then they're not representing just Mercer Island, but representing the entire state in their profession. Derek Franklin, Bruce Fletcher, Chief Holmes. It was amazing, you know, to see that our small community has really amazing staff who are leaders in their field across the state. And I was just very impressed by that. So special thanks to them.
Benson?
Actually, that's a nice segue. I attended two meetings, I guess, recently, and at both meetings, Mercer Island got somewhat of a shout-out. And so on my anniversary, on March 6, I went to an Arch workshop, with my wife, in fact. What better thing to do?
What better thing to do?
It was basically for elected officials, and to provide insight on housing issues as cities develop their comprehensive plans. And they talked about the affordable housing needs, workforce housing issues. And our own Scott Greenberg was there, talking about the ADUs. And Arch really did a, they praised Mercer Island for the number of ADUs that are here, and mentioned that the number of ADUs is like over 200, represents about 2% of our housing units on the island. And basically, Arch encouraged all the other cities to get with the program. And as a result, Scott's going to be, I think, involved in putting on a seminar for the other cities on ADU issues. The other meeting that Deputy Mayor and I attended was a PIC meeting, but I was able to get to this pre-PIC meeting, and they talked about the King County efforts on climate change issues. And they focused on the fact that we're not getting a whole lot of leadership from on top, and so basically, on issues on climate control, or climate change issues, things are more on a local level, bubbling up. And Mercer Island was singled out, again, in the presentation about what cities can do as far as climate change issues, and talked about the Silver Array, and talked about the number of homes that are members of the Puget Sound Green Power. So again, kudos to, again, Scott, and to Kirsten, and all the other staff folks that have been involved in these efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, let's see, following on your report, I will attend, because Noel reminded me, there is a mayor's Arch presentation happening this week, I believe, breakfast meeting. Been quite a bit of work apparently going on around proposals for east side, further east side Arch work. And so I'll learn a lot more there. And that's all I have. If there's nothing else, we are at 9:00 adjourned. Thank you all.